Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Merrimack School Board to order for February 19th, 2024. I'd like to invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, I'd like to welcome everyone. It's nice to see folks coming to our meetings. That's always good to have community members here. We're going to open up our meeting tonight with the public participation portion. I just want to make sure, in case you haven't been to a school board meeting in person, the protocols for that are on the back of the agenda. So make sure to take a look at that if you're planning on coming up and speaking. I've made the assumption that we have several speakers tonight, which is great. So as a result, we're going to open it up. You can see on the agenda, we had planned about 15 minutes for public participation. We're going to open that up to about 30 minutes, give or take, okay? And we ask that if you have prepared comments tonight, if you hear folks coming up with similar prepared comments, you know, we want to make sure we hear from everybody, but not to the point where we're, you know, hearing the same kind of information. So, but of course, everybody is all welcome to come up here and speak. We're going to give everybody about two and a half minutes, so to speak. And when the hand goes up, that's about a 30 second, 30 seconds left. And if we don't get to everybody in that 30 minutes, there is a second portion at the end of the meeting for public comment, which of course, you're welcome to stick around for the meeting. And then if we don't get to you, then, then we will be happy to get to you at that point, okay? So, and then the final reminder is when you do come up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. And if you're a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name, okay? With that being said, the microphone is open and public participation is now live. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Lori.
And just, just so everyone knows, the school board, we listen. We're not, we're not making any decisions. So if we don't answer you, our job right now is just to listen to you and what you have to say.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Bevis, a junior at Merrimack High School. For one, I hope you all enjoyed your emails today about the Gateway at Merrimack High School. I am a friend of Ms. Eagles, a student of hers. She is the person in charge of Gateway at Merrimack High School. She is also in charge of AP coordination impacting 143 MHS students, as well as the South Korean Culture Exchange Program, a school-wide event involving weeks of just intensive planning by her and by many other people. But she also helps many field trips, like the French culture trip to Quebec City. It happened just a month ago. I went. It was great. We had about 25 students. She really helped us have a great time there. The US History Trip for a World War II Museum, I also went to that. It was also great. And the Senior Week Hawk Walk. She also has roles organizing MHS speakers, application and supervision of foreign exchange students, proctoring both the PSATs and the SATs and coordinating with the school, students and parents for US National History Day. She does all of this because of her flexible position in Gateway. And still, all of us students get to see her on a daily basis enough to love her and her spirit. We are pretty angry with the abrupt decision to remove such a core person in our education. And the budget changes, as told on January 29th, we're supposed to debate what could wait a year or two to begin funding, not, not the important things that we care about that could be cut. Though, we were pretty, we were pretty sad to see that that wasn't the case. This is really our outcry to the community and the school board to keep such an influential person as Ms. Agel working on what she is and what she's working on in impacting us students. In the future, I'd really like, love to see more community collaboration and student collaboration with the school and the school board before major decisions like these are made. If the school cuts Ms. Agel's position as head of Gateway, I wish you luck managing her tasks and dealing with, with the student backlash that will come of it. I know you can't do anything directly tonight, but I'd, I'd like to make this clear to the school board and the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thirteen days ago, when I first heard that the-
If you wouldn't mind just stating your name, please.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Trey Grant. Sorry about that. Thirteen days ago, when I first heard that the Merrimack School Board had decided to abruptly cut the Gateway program at the high school, I, I was in shock. How could such a fundamental part of this school be simplified down to just a teacher in a room and then have it be cut as if it were simply another irrelevancy within our district? This decision was voted on very suddenly before any students could speak their mind on it, despite these decisions affecting us directly and despite, as Tim said, these decisions were to perhaps move them, to move these a year before actually cutting any, anything like this. Gateway is, Gateway is fundamental for my own and many other students' education as it provides a space for our education to be further enriched outside of AP and honors classes. And it does not exclude anybody based on their academic performance and instead allows any student who wishes to receive academic support to go to the room. Ms. Agel, the Gateway teacher, is a core part of this program as she is dedicated to our success and is always open to helping any student with college help, career advice, or AP assistance. Her role in the school cannot be replaced by part-time help or any sort of filtering of her duties to other teachers or departments. Cutting her role in this program will harm the education of future generations of students that otherwise do not have the assistance of a teacher wholly committed to their education and help.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Murray and I am a current junior at the high school. I am here in defense of the position of head of Gateway currently filled by Ms. Sally Agel. I believe there is an enormous lack of understanding on her position in the school. The role that she holds is indispensable for both Gateway students and the general student population. Her position is the AP coordinator, makes sure that many AP, all the many AP tests run smoothly for all students. Her position allows her to organize and manage all the field trips for the school. Her position allows her to advise multiple after-school clubs and curriculars. The thought of getting rid of that position is disrespectful to all the work that is done and all the students that it benefits. This decision was abrupt and unprecedented. No students had the ability to speak out against this massive change that would genuinely impact our education and we are angry. I am appalled by this decision because it shows how little student experience is valued and this cannot be followed through with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Brown. I'm a current sophomore at Merrimack High School. During this unfortunate lapse of time where there is no student representative currently on the school board, I feel it's my job as a student rep to Parks and Recreation Committee to echo the remarks of the previous speakers on behalf of the Merrimack High School student body. I recognize that this process has been very difficult and I thank you all and the members of the Budget Committee for not only your willingness to serve, but your careful consideration during this budget process. But for the Merrimack School District to be a beacon of learning, which we all hope it is, we need to ensure programs that not only enrich student life, but increase student education and student outcomes. These do include the Gateway program and the JMU's French program. Now, I know as a community, we've long wished for student and community involvement. As far as I know, we're seeing that now. I think it'd be a pity not to listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonsoir. My name is Chandra Hackenberg. I live at 247 Bablusik Lake Road. I have three children in the district, three different schools, and I'm also a French teacher at Bedford High School. I've come here in support of the Merrimack teachers and the students for the French program at JMU's and also for the Gifted and Talented Program. Merrimack has a very diverse student population. We need to support our students, their choices, and prepare them for a world that is more globally connected. Languages open doors and give opportunities. And if we limit these opportunities and choices, we limit our students. Giving students choice allows them to develop as individuals and challenges them to make deeper connections with our students' studies in the world. French specifically is a very important language to learn. It's a world language. After English, it's the second most learned language in the world. Learning French will help students to work with businesses around the world. When you enter the state of New Hampshire, it says Bienvenue. We have strong French-Canadian roots. We have strong business connections with Canada and European countries. And we have more students coming from Haiti, I know, and Bedford specifically. I have two students this year from Haiti. We need to ensure that we're educating our students to be future leaders, to be entrepreneurs, to be business people, and to be strong communicators. At JMU's, it's important that our students have the opportunity to learn French. That's the foundation of our program. If we cut it at JMU's, we're limiting the scope of the program. They can only take AP French if they start it at the middle school. And so they get to make that choice and that exploratory connection at JMU's. Having only one language teacher at JMU's doesn't fully represent different languages and it's not a language program. If we expose students to multiple languages, we expose them to diverse cultures. I also want to make sure that we are supporting our teachers and our students. We need to raise the bar for our students and offer challenging courses. We can't be limiting our choices. And we are losing Merrimack teacher, we are losing Merrimack teachers for other districts who are paying better. And we can't afford to lose our teachers. They are a backbone of our society. We can't avoid, we can't afford to lose our students who are choosing to go to private or charter schools because they are not being challenged in Merrimack. I propose that we build our community by supporting our teachers and our students, showing them that they are valued and giving students the opportunities to follow their dreams. Merrimack, our world is bigger than Merrimack. And understanding other cultures and communicate languages helps us make connections with other people and disciplines. While we have budget concerns and I understand the need for a new administrative building, we can't cut our teachers and our programs. That's a last resort. We can build a new administrative building without sacrificing our children and their education. We need to invest in the quality education for our students and supporting our teachers and programs. We are invest, by supporting our teachers and programs, we are investing in our community, community and the success of Merrimack. Thank you.
Thank you. You can pull the little, there's a little clip and you can lower it if you need to. Right where your hand is. Yeah, there you go.
Hi, my name is Tiana and I love French. As a student at JMU's, I love all our specials, including French. French class is at risk of getting cut, meaning the only option for language will be Spanish. I love Spanish, but I also understand some students love French. And some people like variety. It's not fair to get rid of a class enjoyed by so many students. I know I'm not the only one angry about this. If you think about it, the school and special schedule will be completely different after this. And the Spanish and French teacher are best friends, so without French, who will Señor Fogg talk to? I hate to think about this special being cut. Also, some students aren't able to pronounce the letters in Spanish. So if French were cut, guess it would be hard to say, to say, I guess it would be hard. Learning French can help you with other subjects too. Plus, it's always good to have variety. French is a world language. Please help us make this fair. Mademoiselle Dunn deserves better and the students love her, so please help us fight for French. Cutting French means that it won't, that we won't have it at JMU's, but we will have it next year in middle school. But wouldn't it be nice to know a few things about French, like to get a head start and at least know the ABCs? Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
My name is, my name is Samantha Schuman. This wouldn't be fair to Mademoiselle Dunn because she'd just be getting fired just to save money. I think that French should stay because, like Tiana said, it's better to get a head start on learning language earlier because it will be easier getting older to learn. I also think French should stay because French is a good language to learn for fun and to speak to French Canadians. We vote for French to stay because, like Tiana said, some students find it harder to pronounce words and letters in Spanish, but find it easier to pronounce in French. Also, speaking more than one language can help your memory, having better decision-making, and can also help with your attention span. It can also increase creativity, boost self-esteem, which is really good for kids especially.
Thank you.
Tim Bollier, Throughout Cat Falls Road. Wow, so first I just want to say, I've never looked at the forum this much. I don't know how you guys take that abuse all the time.
It's great.
I, I, I don't know. But I know this is a tough process. I know this is, you're just trying to do the right thing. But I, you know, I'm actually a little weepy listening to these kids talk. I mean, how well spoken were those two girls? I just, it's a testimony to our town. So I won't reiterate what they've already said or my statistics, or I know that you guys think it's an emotional thing with French, but as you can see, it might be a little bit more than that. Just some things to follow up on that I wanted to talk about real quick, the choice, the history. I want to say that from representing the French-Canadian organizations in New Hampshire and New England, we're going to do a better job of advocacy. So that's something that we've, we're taking aback because we're hearing this demand thing and that's kind of falls on us a little bit. You know, like I've said a couple of times before, the media does a great job helping the Spanish language, but we don't really help ourselves. So that inward looking, I know that some of you might be from Manchester, the West Side. You know that historically, the French-Canadians have kind of taken a beating on this stuff, not able to speak the language anymore, repressed. So this does trigger us a little bit, not to use a current term. Oh God, the forum's going to see that and say triggering. But it does hit a little close to home with, you know, where we do have the economic ties with Quebec. You know, I, I've been in contact with the Quebec Government Office. They've reached out to me and the government of France has reached out to me in Boston. So I would not be surprised if they make a visit to Merrimack or would like to make a visit to Merrimack. So, girls, if this, we aren't successful, there's still going to be hope for the language. Don't worry, you're, you're not done yet. And we're really going to push. So parents have been reaching out to Poutine Fest. So if you go to the Poutine Fest, I'll say it in English so you can understand, Poutine Fest backslash say French for any parents that want to reach out to other French organizations to continue to push, to keep this in Merrimack. We're not going away. The French have always gone away, but not this time. We're going to keep pushing. So we're going to follow this all the way through. There's at least 30 or 40 parents that reached out to me already. So if you want to join that, I don't know, force, right? Then you can join up with us. But that's all I just wanted to say, guys. You know, I understand the struggles this town. I've looked at the budgets. I went to the Rotary Meeting and listened to those guys and have their feedback on what's going on in town. Like I, there's a lot. It's tough, difficult. But I really believe in the French language. I think it can help our town. We're the eighth largest municipality in New Hampshire. We're bigger than Portsmouth, guys. Imagine they cut French in Portsmouth, they'd be up in arms. But Merrimack is just another line item. So we're going to make you see it and we're going to do a better job of advocacy around the state, particularly with the high school. I've talked to the ATF at 7:30, we're having a meeting, talking about doing more programs to the high school students. Again, that's on us. I like to think of myself as a younger person, but I'm looking at you guys and I'm like, alright, I'm not young anymore. So it's on my, our generation, the older millennials, to kind of step up and do some more for yourself. I'm going to step away now, but thanks.
Thank you.
Boy from Fortune for Conservation Drive. First off, I want to congratulate all the students that spoke up here of all ages. That takes a lot. And I think it shows your passion for the school and for the town and for your teachers and for the learning. So congratulations for that. I'm not even sure if I'm opposed or against this step. I'm just going to put it, I wanted to put it in perspective from two angles. As many know, I grew up overseas in Germany. In Germany, they start teaching French along the French border in kindergarten. For good reasons, right? There's about six years, seven years. Many reasons to do that. But I also learned personally, two languages very early on in life and that helped me just to, to, to make these part of my mother, you know, tongue, mother language learning experience, right? So I think it's, it's very, very helpful to learn language programs very early in life. So in that regard, I really do not appreciate and agree with this step at all. I really don't. But there's another perspective and I just want to put that out because people need to hear that too. We have people here in town that have lived here for 60, 80 years in town. They grew up, they, they were born, they were, and they, they worked all their life. They raised their kids in their, in the school system here. And they're forced to leave the town because they can't afford it. And most of the, the main reason is the school budget. And I'm not saying it's wrong or right, what this budget, budget is, I'm just stating the facts. And when, when you say that you're angry with this decision, keep that in mind. There are people that are forced to leave their grandchildren behind, to leave the town because they can't afford living here anymore. So maybe the lesson learned here is to think earlier, harder about reasons or ways to save money and to be efficient as a school district. Maybe even as a teacher, become creative. And I know that's not necessarily the role of a teacher. A teacher's not necessarily an administrator. But a teacher can also make suggestions and take steps to show that their work is, from a financial and fiscal standpoint, you know, taught, something the community, community can support. So maybe the lesson learned here is to be a little bit more proactive a couple of years down the road so we don't have to cut another program in four or five years. Thank you.
Thank you. I was actually expecting more. Okay.
It's nice to know how this works now.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name's Heather Robitaille. My address is 45 Springfield Circle. I will edit my comments to be a little bit shorter. But I wanted to take this opportunity to just shed a bit of light on the budget process since we've had so much focus on it in town and how things work here in Merrimack. So it starts with our administration creating a budget proposal, which is delivered to the school board and budget committee. During this process, both members of the school board and budget committee spent hours meeting with administration in the various areas of our budget, asking questions, requesting additional information to make the best informed choices that we can. As we know, there was a million dollars requested to be cut from the budget. The administration was able to come back with the proposed cuts. And as we're hearing, they were to the Gifted and Talented Program at Merrimack Middle School and High School, French at JMU's, and also a proposed reading interventionist that was supposed to be added at JMU's. The next evening, when budget committee held their first working session, we heard from many students and community members just how meaningful and important these programs were. We also heard from a lot of our community members voices, concerns over taxes and the budget of the school. In Merrimack, the role of the budget committee is to draft the budget for the district. As an appropriation committee, the budget reviews the administration-proposed budget and can choose to allocate different amounts, more or less, based on whether or not they believe that the appropriations support the priorities of the district and are financially prudent. The district's priorities are to treat and serve all our students. Each line in that budget, we were told, and I personally took to heart, represented the needs of a child or a student. The committee was ultimately able to come up to a number. And prior to our last working session, we were in agreement in over 99% of the budget between the school board's proposal and the budget that the budget committee actually drafts, which is what goes on our ballot. At this point, the budget committee members hearing concerns had a number of questions and we reviewed other alternatives for cuts that might be less impactful to our students and community. Asking questions should always be part of having a transparent and informed dialogue that leads to the best outcome possible. I will not speak for any other community members, but for the budget committee. But it is my sincere hope that going forward, the school board, administration, and budget committee will work together to maintain a constructive, respectful dialogue in order to conduct our budget process in a transparent and timely fashion. We are all here today in this room because we believe in our schools and our community and we should continue to strive together to do the best for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Going once. Okay. Well, then I will close this public participation portion of the meeting. There will be a second public participation meeting at the end on agenda items. And I just want to say, I am thrilled at the voices that we heard tonight. I'm thrilled at the people I see in the room. I'm not thrilled about the reasons that it brought us to this point. That's, you know, that's a conversation that we'll have for many weeks to come. But I, I love that there's this energy and focus on the school district right now. And I think that's something that's been missing for a while. And I'm just, I can't say enough how happy I am to see people here voicing their concerns and their passions and what they think the school should look like. I think that's a great thing and nothing bad can ever come out of those conversations. So thank you for coming tonight and thank you for voicing that. And we're going to move on to recognitions.
We do not have any recognitions tonight, but we are hoping in the not-too-distant future.
All right, then we shall move on to our informational updates, starting with our superintendent update.
We want to congratulate a couple of nominees for New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. At the, at our middle school, Laura King and Courtney LaFrancois have been nominated as candidates for Teacher of the Year. That will take a little bit of a time, but just the fact that they have been nominated by their colleagues is quite, quite an honor. On this past Saturday, a very active day for a lot of our musical talent, choral groups and musicians. Fifty-six Merrimack High School musicians participated in the New Hampshire Music Educators Association Solo and Ensemble Festival. For this festival, students select their own repertoire for an approved list of, and perform solos, duets, trios, or chamber groups for an adjudicator. Merrimack had 37 entries that were to be judged, the most of any school in the state by far. We have an outstanding music program in this, in this district. While some students chose to perform for comments only and not to be scored, of the 33 groups that were scored, 29 received the highest possible rating of an A. So congratulations to our students. Any of your students, any of your students?
Oh, there's some in here.
Congratulations. Great job. Very proud of you. From Liz Dumay at my high school, Missy's Closet is once again providing free prom dresses for teen events with the prom just around the corner. The Liz has asked if we could just mention at least that the Missy's Closet Annual Event of Free Prom Dresses for Teens, Fridays from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays and Sundays from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, March 15th through April 14th, closed on Easter and be open again on March 31st. It's at the TJ Maxx Plaza in Manchester. Very honorable, honorable gesture and we congratulate them. Today, the seventh and eighth graders in the Gifted and Talented Program visited the New Hampshire Aviation Museum where they explored the physics of flight. The highlight of the trip was when students took the controls of the professional flight simulator under the instruction of a retired Navy pilot. Excellent activity. At TFS, students and families participated in the annual Penny Wars and the school raised over $2,500 for the school. And the fourth grade was the winning grade level. So congratulations there. The middle school also, number of students participating at the Solo Ensemble Festival, the New Hampshire Music Educators Association. We had about 20 to 22 students who participated. They did an outstanding job according to Principal Krigus. Holly Hall has had a video done by Merrimack Studios of the Teen Academy Police Department, Teen Academy. We have about 18 to 20 students participating. The Merrimack Police Department Teen Academy is a learning experience, a relationship builder, a career pathway. And encourage you to take a look either on Facebook or YouTube with It's Happening in Merrimack. I happened to watch the video today. Our students were tremendously engaged with members of the police department. Just a wonderful relationship. And for some of them, it's going to represent a very important and viable career opportunity. I want to congratulate Alexis Best, who runs track in Merrimack. And she broke the Division One record for 55 meter at the state meet. So congratulations on Alexis on that outstanding achievement. And Mrs. Scott and the high school students. Here's where our high school students do wonders with students in lower grade levels, whether it's at middle school or elementary school. I mean, I've observed that many times in a number of places that I've worked where if adults are talking with a group of students, there'll be a certain attentive, attention span for a while. But when their older peers, siblings, cousins are talking with them and teaching them material, guiding them, you could hear a worm, I think, crawl across a rug. They are extraordinarily attentive. And Mrs. Scott in high- And Mrs. Scott and high school students for cultural equity, worked with M H S and the M H S dance team, came to Thornton's Ferry to perform a dance for second grade students, as well as read books to the second graders at T F S. So were any of you part of that group also? Okay. But just outstanding, being outstandingly responsible in terms of trying to impart as much knowledge, as much caring, as much development to our younger students. And so congratulations to all our high school students who were involved in that particular activity. Only good things come from those interactions between our older students and younger students. And with that, I will stop and turn it over to Amy.
Thanks, Amy, or thanks, thanks, Bill. Now moving on to Amy.
Good evening. In the area of curriculum instruction and assessment, last week we talked about the assessment window opening for our access testing, and that is for our students that are learning English as a second, second language. We were notified this past week that the New Hampshire Department of Education has shared their new five-year state assessment monitoring cycle, and luckily, we have been selected for twenty twenty four. We are one of about forty districts and chartered public schools that will be monitored this season. The purpose of this is to ensure the security and integrity of the state assessment program and that each school district is in compliance with the regulations, policies and procedures to administer the state assessments, and that includes access, New Hampshire SAS, the Night Dynamic Learning Map. We also call that the alternative assessment and the S A Ts. Our district-wide team met today, and that includes representation from each of the schools. We have a building administrator and a school counselor on that team, as well as district-wide staff, and we will be working to review and compile the documentation to submit to the state that we're meeting the state and federal requirements for family notification, staff training, test security and accessibility. I'll be sure to keep you posted.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Well, since last time I was here, I don't really have all that much to say, but I do want to say that, you know, budget season is upon us. I'm looking forward to the deliberative session. And if that can go exactly kind of like, let's hope that this conversation went with everybody being respectful and cordial, and we all listen to everybody's ideas. I think that would be an excellent thing because I love hearing from you guys. We need to hear from you. This is your school district. We are not the people who are telling you what you want. You have to tell us. So we look forward to hearing your opinions. Thank you.
Great. And as far as school board update, I was gonna just remind everybody, the deliberative session is in two weeks, March fourth. It will be held in the J Mews A P R, J Mews A P R, seven o'clock. And we hope everybody in the room and everybody watching at home is able to attend. And there's gonna be a formal rollout of the budget, and there's gonna be an additional formal rollout, I believe, of the, or an update of the Mesa contract, as well as the proposed warrant article for the central office. So if you have any questions, that's a great place. I mean, you can ask any question you want previous to that, but that's where all of the information is gonna be on display, presentations. And like I said, hopefully, hopefully, everybody's able to attend that night. And I think that's it for update.
I was just gonna say, it's really important that if you're eighteen, you bring your license and then you'll get a card, and then people will make presentations like cutting or adding to the budget, and then there's a vote, and that vote counts.
But you have to be a registered voter. You have to be, you have to be a registered voter if you're eighteen.
So register before.
Could I say one more thing? Could I roll back on my little? I just want to make everybody understand that, you know, we have our warrant that's posted that the board is signing right now that has a particular number in there. That number can change. It can only go up by statute by ten percent. It can go down by a hundred percent. So the power is in the deliberative session. If you want to maintain certain things and you want, you like the level of service you're getting now, you know, you will probably be hopefully supporting what we presented to you. If not, other people can go and take five, ten, fifteen million. If they get a second and it passes, that's what goes on the ballot to vote. So there is a power in the deliberative session that very few people, they just think it's another meeting. This is a meeting that can change your community drastically. So I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. Thank you.
Good point, Matt. All right, moving on to old business. Let's talk budget. Two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five operational budget.
May I provide you with a, just a brief update? Since we last met, we had another meeting with the budget committee, and I have to thank you and the members of the budget committee for all the time that you have devoted to this budget review. I would have to say we went home a little bit tired from the, from the budget committee meetings. They were late meetings, but we had a lot of thoughtful conversation by the members. We tried to provide as much information as, as possible. After about eleven hours of discussion over two different meetings, the budget committee voted the same budget that, that you did. It was the same, same construction of what we brought forward to you, what we recommended for the million dollars in reductions. It was difficult in terms of, there were passionate discussions, as there have been with you in terms of certain priorities. But in the end, they did vote the same figure, the pretty much the same configuration of reductions that, that you voted on. And so that's where we are. The budget has been through quite a, quite a vetting. This is when it's, it's very difficult with the public comments and the comments from our students, from, from parents, from, from taxpayers. There is no easy way around school budgeting. What we have been trying to do is improve this school district. Our scores on the state assessments were not strong. They have not been strong. And I'm not gonna kid anyone. Okay, my job, the job of Amy and Matt and all of us is to give our students the best education we possibly can, given the available funds. When I first started here, and then Amy joined in, we joined Matt, who's been here for quite, quite some time. There were definite areas that needed to be addressed and still need to be addressed. I don't like to sugarcoat anything because the public can see through a lack of transparency. And what I've observed is, I think, through a number of years of default budgets or budgets near the default level, we haven't been able to make the progress that we needed to make in terms of curriculum improvements, in terms of certain operational issues. And that's what we've tried to bring to the school district in the last couple of years. What is now working against us is the fact that, and Lori, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the commercial component of the tax base has lost about seventy four million dollars in value, if, if that's the figure. The pain of that is it needs to be made up somewhere, and that means the incidence of taxation shifts to the homeowners, which makes it extraordinarily more painful. And we understand that. We're not trying to spend at will, and I, and I don't mean to editorialize here, but this is about my forty fifth year of doing budgets out of, out of fifty four total years in this profession. There is no easy budget that is prepared at any time in any community. It's exacerbated, the difficulty is exacerbated extraordinarily right now in that devaluation of commercial properties, which has to be made up by the residential component of the tax base. We absolutely recognize that. We've tried to put a budget that, together that was based on priorities. What we've seen in terms of the state assessment data, what we've seen in terms of the formative assessments that our, our teachers are giving on a regular basis, we were concerned about the aging of our curriculum at a number of levels in this school district. We can't have a curriculum that's five, not five, ten, fifteen years old. Just can't happen. We have committed ourselves to more professional development in the district. We've committed ourselves to purchasing literacy program that will provide our students with an extraordinarily well-rounded and structured program that we, we, we have been lacking. We brought in interventionists to try to mitigate having a student go immediately from general education to special, special education, because we didn't have any interim intervention services. The importance of that, and here's where you need to spend a little bit of money to save a little bit of money. Some of the students who would have been referred to special education for service are now referred to our reading interventionists. The issue is that when you refer a student from a regular education environment to special education, the cost per pupil almost doubles, right? Now, it is our moral and ethical obligation to provide services to those who have disabilities or as I like to call them, special abilities. Nobody's left behind here, but it costs money. We've tried to prioritize what we've brought to you, what we brought to the, to the budget committee in terms of those areas that we know we still need to improve upon. And so I, I don't mean to provide a lecture here, but it sometimes is frustrating when you put a lot of work into it, but you're working against a system that is, that is difficult in terms of the tax, taxation policies, the amount of state aid or the lack of state aid. Something has to become restructured, to be restructured at the state level to help local cities and towns who unfortunately have to bear an extraordinary burden to fund municipal, other town services and school services. School departments have a propensity to be the bad guy in a community. What we're trying to do is be as efficient as possible. We try to bring you a quality education and correct those inefficiencies that we see exist. So I'll stop talking. I know you've had a lot of comment from the public. Matt and Amy and I are, are interested in hearing that. We've heard from our students and parents. And we'll, we'll be interested in engaging in a conversation with you in terms of what you've heard, what you observe, and any changes that you think you would like to see.
Who wants to go first? Well, I can start. So, and again, just, we've gotten a ton of feedback. If I haven't gotten back to you yet, I apologize. It's just because there's, there's a lot. So, and I, I'm an educator. I'm a music teacher. So when I, when the proposals came in front of me, I was just as shocked as everybody else. I looked at those and I said, wow, really? This is what we're talking about? And when I decided to run for this position, that was something I always said to myself, you know, if nothing else, like we have to hold on to, to positions. And when you're in this position, when you're on this side of things, you hear it from all angles. You hear everything you're saying tonight, and you hear just as many of the opposite side of things. And we don't get to make choices with our hearts. We have to make choices based on the ink, based on what's in front of us. And that's the hardest part, and that was the hardest part for me when looking at this stuff. So, you know, it's, taking programs away is never something I ever want to do, ever. But at the same time, as Bill just said, we've lost seventy four million dollar in commercial, million dollars in commercial property value. A New Hampshire state judge ruled in the fall that New Hampshire does not adequately fund public education. We're short by about half right now in terms of what towns should be, or the state should be providing the state. And in the same hand, we have legislators actively taking tax dollars away from public schools and giving them to other schools. So I, I would, I share a lot of that same frustration, and I would channel it at the folks making those kinds of decisions. Because all we can do is look at what's in front of us here in the town of Merrimack. And when looking at those kinds of programs, you know, decide, and looking at our state assessments, which I've set up here, I don't put every, I don't put all of our eggs into the state testing scores. I never do, and I never have. It's a metric. It's not the metric that we use to judge how our schools are doing. But they are a metric, and right now, if you look at our scores, they're not great. They're not great in math or in reading. They are getting better. We've put a ton of investment into those programs, and I expect in the next three to five years, you're gonna see huge improvements. We're still coming out of COVID recovery. All of those things play a role into all of those things. So when we're making those kinds of choices, that was how, when, once it was explained to me, and once I looked at it, I, you know, I said, okay, well, let's put it out there and see what the people say. And we heard, we heard from a lot of you, so. So yeah, that's, that's why I voted the way I did. That's the decision, that's the reason I made the decision I did. So, but it certainly wasn't one that I took lightly and certainly wasn't one that felt great, I would say. So, go ahead.
So is this the time we can talk about our, our thoughts on some of this? I thought we were gonna do it during other. So, when we sat and we came with cuts, people are saying we did it because of the S A U. I want to clarify that. That's not why we did it. We did it because the operating budget was far larger than any previous operating budget had been for the, for the previous year. We had, it, it, it was big. We're chasing some big goals in Merrimack. I'm really proud of the work that this board has done to change the way we do literacy in Merrimack. And I would say we've made great strides already. I've been hearing from parents about their I ready scores and how they've been shocked at what they've been seeing. I've experienced it in my own household. Really, really proud of the fact that we've done that, and I know that I've heard only good things about that. I'm proud of the fact that we're trying to chase some big goals and continue that momentum forward. The problem is, there's only so much money, and we have to say yes or no to certain things. And, you know, I, I'm not going to stand up here and, you know, go over every single different decision because that was, it would be, take too long. But I know one of my thoughts, one, when we reduced the, the world languages at J Mews. You know, we have two full-time teachers that only have a half-time teaching schedule. Financially, when you're in a budget situation, I have to look at taxpayers, and I have to be able to defend that. So we reduced it down to one position. I've heard very clearly, and I agree with it completely, that we should not be picking one language over another. I've heard completely that we should be exposing students to the languages that they'll get to learn further down the course. So I, I reached out to you, I reached out to Lori, and I, and I said, you know, I have a thought. I, I wonder if what we need to do, and this is, this is a thought, I'd love to see it considered to change the one position that's left to a world language and culture position that doesn't exclusively focus on one language, that instead increases exposure to all of the languages we teach at the high school. Spanish, French, Mandarin, Arabic, Latin. I'm not saying it has to be exclusively those, but if we are going to, if we're saying that French can't be eliminated because what are the, how are those kids gonna know how to choose those languages when they move further? How do they know to choose Mandarin? How do they know to choose Arabic? So I would love to see it be something that we can reflect, starting at J Mews. And maybe we can find a way to even carry those other languages somehow up through the middle school in the future. I don't know what that looks like. I'd love to say, this is not a mandate from me. This is a, when you said restructure the world language program at J Mews, my thought was, wow. I think we have an opportunity to do something cool here. Another thought that I had, and I know, and you have, you expanded on my idea so beautifully, and I'll let you talk to that in a second. But another thought I had too was being able to include some of the high school students that take those languages, and they're in French four, and Spanish four, and Mandarin four, and Latin four, Arabic four, and have them come down to J Mews and engage with the students, teach them some things, and give them high school credit as gifted and talented students who are taking advanced studies and be able to bring them down. So I want you to know that I heard that you didn't hear what was in our heads. That's what happened. Because when I heard that, I did say, I don't know if it should just be Spanish. Because when I heard that, I did say, I don't know if it should just be Spanish. And I'm, and I'm saying, I think that's where the board dropped the ball. I'll blame myself, I won't blame everybody here, I'll blame myself. That's where we dropped the ball on communication, and I think that is a way we can come together as community and find common ground to move forward and actually look back and be like, hey, we did something pretty cool here. So I, that's personally what I would love to see explored, not a mandate.
Adding on to what Jenna said, as we discussed, ideas and brainstormed this, we are a diverse community. I will agree with that 100%. I not only know Wolf, who speaks German, and I had to learn German as part of my education. I grew up learning Spanish. But we also have people who are Swedish and Italian, and we have, we, New Hampshire is a world culture area. Yes, we have two languages that may dominate, but we are diverse. We offer five languages at the high school because of that diversity. The engagement with the Middle East and the refugees who've come and the community that they have built here is where Arabic comes in so handy in reaching those communities. And we have so many students coming from China. If you have been to UNH, there is a huge, huge influx of students from China, and at SNHU, and at Keene State. So we have an opportunity to not just learn these languages, but to use them within our own state. And so I agree, we are diverse, and that's where I love this idea of at that fifth and sixth grade level, expanding their exposure through greetings and basics like food and things like that, working with the community on food tasting, other, other areas that they've never tasted poutine before, you know, things like that. But also customs, holidays, games. We keep the special, I love specials for kids. We keep the special, we keep the position, but we expand it beyond just one language. We expand it so that it is a feeder system to the high school and all the languages up there. And I think that would make our program, which is unique, most districts don't have a program in the fifth and sixth grades like we do. It would really make Merrimack unique. And yet, the cost impact on the budget doesn't change. It just redefines the program. And I think that is where we can really both be efficient and equitable. Bill and I both have economic backgrounds. I teach macroeconomics, and we talk about that economics is the protection and use of scarce resources. But we want to do it efficiently, but not just efficiently, but equitably. And we're always looking as economists to find that balance. And I think this idea finds that balance.
And I just want to follow up. Again, not a mandate, just as, as board members, I would love to see something like that happen. I think the biggest criticism is, why Spanish or why French? Why did we pick one and cut it? And I, and looking back, we needed to be more clear. We needed to reduce it down to one position. Now let's take that one position and, and do something that, you know, maybe doesn't focus on just one language and works it. And I think when we're talking about gifted and talented, we've heard the concerns from the students here about what they would lose from that program. And I think we've talked about the ways that there is challenge at Merrimack High School. We've, we've talked about the pathways to graduation and ELOs, which is an area that hasn't been explored as much because it's so new. My, my feeling as a board member is, one of the biggest things I've heard is, we need a safe space. I've heard it from a lot of students, not just the gifted and talented students, I've heard it from a myriad other students as well. So to me, that is something that, that I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that the school district, with support from the board, maybe even involvement from the board, can begin to explore how we can provide that while also looking to restructure gifted and talented as it has existed before. Not saying that we are getting rid of it. We want to create opportunity, but we want to talk to them about what it is that is, that matters. But budgetarily, because it was a position that is not a teaching position with a curriculum, we're paying, that, we're paying a teacher with a, you know, credential, and that is why that, that was looked at as a cut. Because we have a, you know, without a direct instruction, it's a teacher without direct instruction. That is why many of us looked at that as a cut. That's not to say that we cannot provide certain things that, that those, that that program provides to find in other ways. It is about looking at what we can do to restructure, to be creative, to still meet the needs, but in a different way with a reduced budget. And as a board member, I'm, I'm, you know, want to work with the administration to make that happen.
Go ahead, Lori.
So, every June, the school board works with the administration, and we, we spend a whole day together and we set district goals. And the district goals are looking at all the assessments, all the past practices, and what we can do better. And then through those goals, the school board focuses our energy on trying to capitalize and reach our goals. And this year, we, we set really strong goals, we were very excited. Some of the things that we set are the Mesa contract, which is the contract for paraprofessionals, for our custodians, for our kitchen workers, and for our admin assistants. And, you know, when we went into negotiations, Lori and I negotiated the contract, it was very difficult because our, our staff was very much underpaid, and, and we were very concerned about losing, losing people, or even just being able to hire. We had to have contracted services for our custodians, and we literally had people that we were trying to get them to be paid $15 an hour. And so when you hear that, that's shocking. And then at the same time, we have this $74 million cut on the town side, and then people got their tax bills in December, and people had a lot, a lot of concerns. And so, you know, I think that the Mesa contract was, was a priority for us. The reason that the central office was a priority for us is because our middle school bond is actually paid for. So the middle school's paid for, and so, you know, we've been talking about this new SA building for 10 years, for 10 years. And so, and, and, you know, I gave tours this weekend, and I, I learned more myself in these tours, and, and I also listened to people. We had 10 people come, but I, I appreciated everyone who came, and I appreciated what they had to say. And, you know, some of the things that they said was, you know, like, are you sure the conference room needs to be that big? And here's what I would say about the conference room. We don't have a meeting space in this town. This is it, right? And if we're going to have a budget committee meeting, it's in the cafeteria of the high school, and they have to put all the tri, you know, chairs up, and then they have to put them back down. If we're going to do professional development with a lot of our teachers, they have to go out because we can't run a solid professional development because we don't have meeting space. And these, these are houses. So, you know, they're in like tiny little bedrooms, and we are, we are an 89, 90 million dollar business, and we have people in all different schools trying to communicate. And so we were trying to get everyone together, 16 directors, our superintendent, our curriculum director, our BA, all of the admin, all their assistants, and have them in one building. And, and so we did take some criticisms, like, oh, you know, they care about brick and mortar. But these people in these buildings, their parents, and we have mold in those buildings, we don't have proper egress in these buildings, and so we felt it was a critical need also. So, so I just wanted you to know that all of this has been very difficult for all of us too.
Go ahead, Naomi.
I don't have much to add, other than that it's, it's been a rough two weeks, I think, for everybody in this room, and I'm including everybody in the audience. I was talking about it with a friend of mine this morning, and she looked at me and she goes, democracy is messy. And I just wanted to thank everybody here for participating in this amazing messy process with us.
Yeah, and, and I know we're going to talk about the, the building here in a minute, so I'll save my comments on that. But, you know, I think a lot of, just to give some perspective, like, those conversations about the Mesa contract and looking at the bottom line and hearing about the loss in state aid and all of those things, those all weighed into our decision-making. Because again, there's, you know, four out of the five of us are either current or former educators, so we certainly understand where these emotions are coming from because we shared many of them. So taking the, like, I love this idea about the world language in fifth and sixth grade. I think that's a really great opportunity. I value world language. I lived in Germany for a semester in high school. I lived on the west side of Manchester my whole life. I had friends whose parents didn't speak English, they only spoke French. And I remember them making fun of me in French, and, you know, so, so, like, I, I do have a strong bond with the French-Canadian folks that I grew up with. I still talk to them, and I, you bet, I heard from them about this as well. So I completely understand. But, you know, if we're, we're talking about, you know, again, you know, how much we value these programs, and even with gifted and talented, I hear a lot of, this is so important to me because of, you know, how it makes me feel, like, these are, this is my community, and this is, these are the, the folks that, I, you know, I feel, I just, this is my space, right? And I think we can still offer that. I think that can still be a thing. I think we can still make that happen. I think we just have to be creative with that. And if the name goes away, that doesn't mean those things need to go away. So I just think that's, that's something that we as a community need to think about and need to work towards. We hear you, there's so many things about these programs that we value and we find important, and we want to honor that. We have to find a creative and a financially responsible way to do that. So I encourage you to keep sending feedback, even though my inbox is like so full. Keep sending feedback because these are the ideas we need to hear, and we're going to keep tweaking away at it, we're going to keep looking at it. So, so thank you. Yeah.
Can I just say one more thing publicly? We do get all your emails. It's just sometimes we get swamped, and it's very hard to keep up. So it's not that we don't read them. I read every single word of every single email sent, I just sometimes cannot reply. So if you don't get a reply, or don't get a quick reply, it is literally because we're parents and jobs, and I, there's not enough, I would have to be up till 2:00 AM answering emails sometimes, so I do my best.
And I would add to that, if you did not hear this, we can only talk about it once a year. Any email that goes to the whole board, we have designated our chair to be that one that responds. So like, when you send it to all five of us, that's why you don't get five emails back. We all see it, we all read it, but we have designated the chair of our board to be the spokesperson for the five of us.
So sorry, you're stuck with me. Sorry. All right, further discussion?
I'd just say that we accept the challenge with the recommendations and suggestions that you've made, and let us, let us see what we can do to meet your, your expectations.
Thank you. All right, proposed school district, SAU Central Office Building, which we've already kind of hinted on tonight. We have a beautiful layout over there, you probably saw when you walked in.
Just a couple, may I make a couple of comments, please?
Yeah. Those aren't the building plans?
No.
Oh, boy.
I, I was looking at it too, going, no, that's not the building.
Those are nice fields though, right?
Yeah.
Time for new glasses.
Well, just, just a few comments if I could.
Just kidding.
First of all, we're not into extravagant trappings, okay? What we're looking for is a building that is simple, very simple in design, wood construction, but has suitable office spaces. Yes, the conference room, the conference room from experience, many years of experience, is one of the most important spots in, in a school district. As you said, Lori and others, all the trainings, not only in the school district, but of other town departments. We had community meetings in the conference room in my former district. Police and fire would run therapy sessions after first responders, and our public service staff came upon some very difficult, very difficult scenes in terms of either accidents, crimes, et cetera, and they would decompress. We ran courses out of the conference rooms for our staff, courses that we designed that we can do here also. Restraint and seclusion training is extraordinarily important. We want to run tabletop exercises of school safety. We provide the leadership team with the different scenarios of emergencies, and how do we handle it? My first experience with that in the conference room in my former district is, we had two, two different scenarios. One was a bomb threat, the other was a serious gas leak. The fire department and police department were with us. This, I'm just kind of illustrating the importance of being able to get together and bring in public safety officials. When we went over the scenario of the gas leak in a school building, the fire chief said, all right, principals, assistant principals, what would you do? First person to speak said, I'd turn off the lights.
Yeah.
That's the first lesson we learned, you don't touch anything. And so those are the types of lessons and the trainings that impart a lot of fast thinking and knowledge to try and keep our students and our staff safe. So the conference room is really one of the most important components of that facility, and most important to the, to the town also. We want community meetings to be held there. We want other departmental meetings to be held there. It is not oversized, it's about 1,400 square feet if I remember correctly, Matt.
Yeah, if I could say one thing?
Sure.
Yeah. Because we have a lot of smart kids out there. These tiles are two by two. Tell me how big this room is. I'll give you a couple of minutes. Go ahead, Bill.
The tiles, you said?
The tiles are two by two. You count this way, you count this way, you multiply them together, and you get a number.
Now I'm going to be counting tiles instead of paying attention to the meeting, Matt.
You're either counting ceiling tiles or floor tiles.
You've never seen me look around like this, going...
So what we're not looking to do, as some people have, and I've heard it before over many years, build a Taj Mahal. That is of no interest to us whatsoever, just a functional building. Second point I want to make is, because I don't want to see voters go to a deliberative session with misinformation. This entire obligation is not being paid in fiscal 2025. It's, it's not. And I think there's some people out there who are saying, that's added 6.9 million, whatever the actual bid price will commit as, we're hoping it would be less than that, certainly. It's not in the operating budget, it's just the first year of commitment, of the amortization schedule, and, you know, Matt can explain.
Yeah, I just, you know, because there's, there's some information out there that we're raising and appropriating the whole 6.9 million, and we're going to throw that in the operating budget all at one time. That couldn't be anything further from the truth. It's a 15-year bond at 3.25% interest, the first payment is 174,000, the highest year's payment is like 687, then it drops from there. And that's what it is. So your first year's tax impact is negligible because we dropped $800,000 worth of debt from the middle school, which was said 10 years ago, we're going to entertain the central office when the middle school bond is paid off. It's paid off now. So now is the, now's the perfect time to feather that in. Or maybe it's, maybe it's next year, but it's still a good time to do it.
See, right now, everybody's saying, well, why didn't we do it 10 years ago, when it was far less expensive, interest rate was probably, probably lower? It's because people didn't want to make a decision. And the cost of doing nothing is not nothing, it's not zero. The cost of doing nothing means that it escalates
Got an answer.
...by about a quarter of a million dollars every year. I presented you, I presented the budget committee with a graph of the price indexing in non-residential construction over the last 15 to 20 years. It has escalated rapidly. Supply and demand, the emergence of other economies around the globe with their extraordinary increase in demand for products and services that are produced in this, in this country. If we don't do anything now, five years from now, somebody's going to be saying, why didn't we do it five years ago? Five years ago, it was six, six and a half million, now it's eight, eight and a half million. It's a losing proposition. And so at some point in time, somebody needs to make a decision to bite the bullet, and, excuse me for even using that expression. for even using that expression, and do something, make a decision, because it only becomes more costly. And I'm not here to lecture anyone. It's just that I've seen this time and time again, over decades, where people don't want to make a decision. The problem is that delaying, that deferring becomes extraordinarily more expensive. So I just wanted to mention that we're not looking for anything extravagant, just the basics. That it's not 6.9 or whatever the bid price is, hoping it's lower, is not, we're not looking to, for that to be raised and appropriated this year. It's just a small component of the debt, debt service. The site is ours with all the utilities available there. So there's a great advantage to it. So, you know, we'll be glad to answer any questions. It's just that this is the time of year, sometimes people like to float out a little bit of information that is wrong. And that is the enemy of a town meeting or a deliberative session is getting wrong information from people. And quite honestly, I don't have any patience for that. Because I want everybody who goes to a deliberative session to have accurate information and know precisely what they're voting on and not guessing. So I'll stop lecturing, but I wanted to get those points in because this is the time, this is the time in the process where it gets dangerous, where everybody gets emotional. Everybody starts to, to provide information that is emotional in nature, but probably incorrect in full or in part. So we'll, we'll be glad to answer any of your questions also.
Could I, could I say one thing?
Please, Matt.
Okay. I posed the question to the audience. The conference room at the central office is around 1,400 square feet. So the answer to my question is how big is this room is? 1368. So is this room too big? Is this room too extravagant? It's the same size as what we're looking for. I think, I don't think it is. I think this is appropriate for what we need to do with it. So just, just to give everybody a visual.
Uh, go ahead, Lori.
I just want to clarify something because of the way my brain functions. We are voting this year to commit to this bond. It is, it is 6.9 unless it comes in lower. That is what we are committing to and we're committing to the annual payments of that. It is also true that the annual payments for the middle school exceeded what we will be paying in annual payments for this. So I just want to make it clear that while the tax impact is, you know, negligible because of that, it is a 15-year commitment that we're voting on this year. So this is, you know, when you're talking about big policies and big bonds and stuff like that, I think sometimes it helps to break it down like that. Also, could I say something about the misinformation, but not about this subject? It's another warrant article. It's about the roof. So we have a roof warrant article. Now, I know many of you, you need a new roof, you go get a roof. It's got 20-year shingles, 30-year shingles, whatever, you don't expect to have to fix it again. On our website, and you can also ask Matt, we aren't doing an entire school's roof. Our roofs are in sections of when they were built, when they were added, when their warranties go up. So the reason we have a roof warrant article every year is because we have sections of the roof that have to be done according to that schedule. So we never do like the entire high school. That would, that would be huge, huge an expense. We have it broken down as to when every roof needs to be repaired. We keep an eye on roofs as they get close to the end of their warranties or pass their warranty. Are they leaking? Do we need to fix it right now? Which is, we had one last year that had to be moved up on that schedule. So I just want to clarify that the reason we have a warrant article every year for a roof is because we don't do the whole roof at once. We do it in the sections. Otherwise, we would be like doubling and wasting effort because if we did a roof five years ago, we don't need to take that whole thing off already. So I just wanted to clarify that as well for the deliberative session.
And the roofs we're putting on, the roofs that we're proposing, two, two of the sections were in 1999. One of the sections was 1997 and they've been off warranty for a good 10 years now. And when we put a, put a roof, a brand new roof on, it's a 45-year warranty. So like I said, and I like to joke about this, when a roof goes on and me and Tom are here talking about a roof, Tom's the SOR facilities director, who's up there all the time. Once that roof is on, you will never see us again asking for that roof to be replaced.
Matt, Matt actually answered the question I was gonna ask, which, cause I wanted to point that out is how old these roofs that we're replacing are. But the other, the other fun statistic that you mentioned at a previous meeting, how many?
Oh, 11 acres?
Acres, yes. How many acres of roofs do we have in the district? That's why it seems like we're doing more roofs than, than that, because.
And that's a lot of sections because you look at the high school, there's probably eight additions on that high school. That's eight sections. The Master Cola complex, which was first built in what, 1940, something like that? Where used to be the, the high school in the front part where the police station is? You know, there's gotta be at least 10 additions to that roof. So there's different sections. And so that's why we have to do it in sections. And plus, you can only do so much, you can only do roof in the summertime. You could do them in the fall, but it wouldn't be good because you have kids there. And when you have kids and you have roofers and everything like that and big lulls that bring up the materials and everything, you can't have that. So you've got to play to the time allotment that you have. You have to hope that it's sunny all summer, so you don't have any rain. And then you have to get it done in, in little stages and whatnot. And we've kept that up for a number of years. It used to be, we used to, we used to do the roofs, come by counting how many buckets were on the floor in the classroom. We don't do that anymore. Tom inspects everything. They've done some infrared looking, infrared analysis of, of the, of the roofs. You know, you can see when the insulation is, 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 is not viable anymore. That means it's wet, right? So that's how we can tell. Thanks.
Right, Lori.
So I just have two things. One, just so everyone knows, there is a school planning and building committee and the school planning, building committee looks at all of this information and there's something called a capital improvement plan. And so every year, Matt puts together when a roof is going to be done or if we're going to get air conditioning in some of our buildings or how that's gonna play out. And, and it's a 10-year plan and some things move this way and some things move that way based on that plan. And sometimes what happens is like we had bats in the ceiling at Merrimack High School, lots of bats. So in that capital improvement plan, we were actually able to move some money to take care of the bats in the ceiling, which was kind of, you know, a, a big project for us. As far as going back to the, the central office, I just wanted to say that one of the questions that people had was information on the bids. We did have three bids. The question was, how did we make the decision? And the way the decision was made is first it went to the building planning committee, then it came to the school board. We looked at the bids. We ended up going with the architect who built the middle school because we felt that the middle school was really well done. And so the board looked at all of that information and then made that decision. Then the other question was about, you know, how much time did we spend looking at industrial commercial properties? Well, first of all, there's not many, but I think that G.H. Perry from the building planning committee can get that information on the buildings. We did look at what is the square footage? What does it cost to try to rehab a building? And we found out time and time again, it was gonna be more money to rehab and someone does want that question. And then one of my favorite parts of the day on Saturday was showing everyone what I called the cafeteria, which is a tiny, I don't even know how many square feet, but maybe like four of these tiles is the cafeteria. And this cutest little girl goes, wow, this is really nice. Just touched my heart.
Yeah, go ahead, Jenna.
Okay, so this, this is slightly off topic of the, of this, of the SAU building and it might go back to the operational budget situation, but I'm, the one more question, and I'm just, it's because I'm excited to have people in the room and I really would like this explained while there's people sitting here. Mr. Chevanel, could you explain the, the surplus for us? And you know, like, why?
We, we have a, we have a, we had a surplus at the end of 2223. We voted to, we, we retained 500,000 of that because we can now. The other 6.2 million dollars went back to reduce the school portion of the tax rate. Okay? We're gonna have probably another surplus at the end of 2324. Right now, it's an estimate. I just left the same 6.2 in there. I'm thinking maybe it's close to that, maybe it's less. I'm not thinking it's gonna be anymore. And that's something, if we want to retain in any of that, we can only retain 5% of our net assessed assessment, which is around three and a half million dollars. And we can't, you, we have to go before the board. It's not for major projects. It's not for a large capital improvement projects, because that's called offline budgeting. That's when you're budgeting, when you really don't have an appropriation. It's for little things that you think of and it's for tax rate stabilization. That's what it's for.
Can you explain why there's a 6 million dollar surplus?
Well, we didn't hire.
Not to put you on the spot, but I know there's real reasons and people think it's because we are hiding money in the budget. And I've looked at the budget and if we're hiding it, we're hiding it real well.
No, we, we, we haven't hired a cust, a new custodian in four years. There's a surplus in salaries, there's surplus, there was a surplus in teaching salaries. There's definitely a surplus in, in par salaries. We haven't hired, we're still short paras in the operating budget. You, every year you have a mix of people who come in and take health insurance. Some of them take all single plans, some of them take family plans. It all depends about the mix you're gonna get. You know, sometimes you have a guaranteed maximum rate of 8% and it comes in at 6%. So it automatically generates a surplus. You know, 6 million dollars on a, you know, 80, 90 million dollar budget. We're spending like, you know, almost 95% of it right then and there. You know, so it does. And you want to be in that kind of position to show a bit of a surplus in your operating budget because number one, that's how you get a three and a quarter percent interest rate on your bond. Because we have to send our audit reports, which we get audited every single year. And we have perfect audits. I have them all. And we have to send those to S and P and we have to send those to Moody's. So even though we go through the bond bank, there's some of our rating is on our own. So the ability to have a surplus every year proves to all the investors, we're gonna invest in our bonds, that we have the ability to pay our bills. If we're running zero surplus in our budget, that says, I don't think they have the ability in case of an emergency to pay their bills, then they're a bad investment. Then they get downgraded. Then that three and a quarter percent percentage increase moves up to five, could move up to six. Who knows? So that's why we need it. The town has an 8 million dollar surplus and they have a 40 million dollar budget. So good, good for them. They're, they're, they're doing it the proper way.
So to summarize, it's because of unfilled positions.
Yep.
And because we have to, so we've been given right now a maximum, guaranteed maximum rate of 15.9%. Let's say, and I'm making this figure up completely because I have no idea. It comes in at 13% or 10%. We had to budget for the full amount, but lucky ass it didn't come to that. So that is why those things are in there because we have unfilled positions, benefits, and we're spending the money, we're on curriculum for curriculum. We don't leave those lines, those things aren't being unspent.
And the thing is, if we have a situation where, let's say, we renegotiate our natural gas contract, we get the GMR, the, the actual health insurance rate comes in much lower than what the GMR is. We don't go looking around saying, boy, we got an extra million dollars here. Let's go buy stuff. We don't do that. That's why we have a surplus. We give it back to the taxpayers to reduce their tax burden. It all comes back.
I think that's really helpful because I think most people hear that and think we are not spending the money and therefore why are we asking for it in the first place?
Yeah, we, we, we spend the money according to, to what we said we were gonna spend it and we don't look for other stuff to buy just because we have extra money laying around.
Well, so just to give my, some of my thoughts on the SAU building and just based on what I've heard. And, you know, I've heard a lot of people too saying it's, it's extravagant, it's too much, you don't need all that. And I, I just wonder if folks understand what the, what the purpose of the office space would be? The purpose of this building would be? And, and you know, as Lori mentioned, the planning and building committee has done the research. They've looked into retail space and industrial space and the cost, you know, like the rightade down the street, which are recently opened building that's available. The cost to turn that into a office space would be almost as much as a new building. It's, it's, the, the cost is just extravagant. So the, the work is out there. The planning and building committee have done a tremendous amount of research on that. What happens, and Jenna and I were talking about this the other day. What happens is, you know, if the town decides this is not something we think is great this year, we're gonna come back with a new proposal because this is a major problem. This is a major problem that we have in the office. It's not going away. We have 20 some odd administrators spread out across the district in four different buildings. And if, if anything, we can, we can take a look at this proposal and say, okay, let's see where we can make fixes and changes. But, you know, this is something that is very much a priority for us. It's a need for us. It's, it's certainly not a want. That, that conference room is not our conference room. It's the town's conference room. It's anybody, just like our school buildings or the town's buildings, anybody can use them. So it's not something that we're, you know, coordinating off just for the district. That's available for everyone. So it's, you know, and I, I completely understand. I'm, when I started this process, I was confused about bonds and paying them off and what that looked like. And now that I understand it and seeing how that's wrapped up into our budget, I can certainly see why there's, there's confusion and frustration around it for sure. But I do think it's, you know, it's something that's been talked about for a really long time. The plan has always been, once the bond for the middle school is paid off, we're gonna give this a shot. And so we're giving it a shot and we'll just hear what everybody has to say on voting day.
I have, I have one quick question. One thing I've, in talking to people, one thing that I've heard a lot is, I think, I've consistently heard actually from pretty much everybody that those buildings that we have now are not acceptable.
Yeah.
That's, that's, everybody acknowledges that. There's great disagreement about what the correct solution is. One of the things that I've heard that I'm not sure if we've ever said out loud and I just sort of assumed this was the answer, but I'd like it verified is, why can't we just fix the buildings that we have? And why is this whole ADA compliance issue such an issue? And my, my understanding is that it is, is that if we touch them, correct? If we renovate something, we have to bring the whole thing up to code? And that's why it is prohibitively, prohibitively expensive to renovate the buildings that we have is because if we touch them, we've got to do all kinds of work to bring them up to code and.
You, you know how you start renovations on those buildings? With the DeFranzio brothers who took down the Red House? That's how you start the, that's how you start the renovations. There's nothing you can do to those buildings to renovate them without blowing out the walls and giving them proper hallway widths, proper doorway widths. I mean, you know, I'm stating the obvious, at least to me.
And that's the thing is that I don't think people realize that like we can't say, update some part of the inside. We can't, we can't redress the mold because, because I've, what I've heard is people saying, well, why haven't you, why haven't you maintained them? Why are you just letting them, them fall into the ground? And because the answer is if we maintain them, as soon as we touch them, we have to fix everything.
And we still have not gotten our report from the fire chief at all. We haven't gotten anything.
That is, that is correct.
And not for lack of trying. We've asked.
I'm gonna find out tomorrow when they are scheduled, but I'll, I'll let, I'll let you know.
Yeah, I, I think that's an essential information right now that we need.
And I just want to say something that I said before, but you know, 52 years ago, the town of Merrimack bought, you know, built the Thornton's Ferry and the Reed's Ferry School. That's 52 years ago. And at the time, Thornton's Ferry School did not have enough students in it. So they had to bust the kids from the middle. But there was a visionary, there was, listen, this town's gonna grow. We're gonna need these elementary schools and we built them. And look at them now. I mean, and so this central office is long overdue, but it's going to be the, it's gonna be the face of the future. In 52 years from now, someone's gonna be sitting here talking about building that building. So that's my final.
And this, and this is it. I mean, not this, this year, this warrant. I mean, when we decide as a town to address this issue and build an SAU, that's gonna be the one. And it's probably forever. They're gonna have to figure out how to live with it. I mean, at least for, I don't know, 100 years or however long, but long after we're all dead and gone in this. But long after we're all dead and gone in this room. So, because, I mean, nobody wants to be, nobody wants to be, you know, building an S A U. And you know, we'd love to be building all sorts of things or doing other things. But sometimes you have to do what you have to do. Every district has an S A U. We'd love to see it pass. If it's, if it's not, um, this year, we'll go back to the roaring port. But when it finally gets done, this is, this is the S A U we're going to have for-
And I did do a little bit of, of poking around, uh, at other school districts and what other school districts use. And, uh, many use very similar buildings. Some folks have, um, and their S A U is embedded in the town hall. Like Goffstown does that, Dover does that. We can't do that. Um, we don't have the space for it. Um, but a lot of them are standalone independent buildings. Some of them rather large, some of them not so much. So this isn't something that's out of the ordinary. We can definitely disagree on the size and the specs and all that stuff. But, um, this is something that the vast majority of districts, not just bigger than ours, but smaller than ours have. The district I teach in has an S A U building about the size that it's, not those are fields, but about the size of, that it's being, um, I keep pointing over there and that's not the thing. Um, so, uh, so yeah, it's, uh, we, that has, uh, one that's about the same size that we're being proposed here. So, um, so it's, you know, I, again, um, if, if the information's out there, we're going to do a big, um, rollout at the deliberative session. We have some, some presentations planned for that. So hopefully folks, um, can, um, you can again, ask questions ahead of time. But, um, hopefully a lot of them will be answered at the deliberative session.
May I just say that, uh, remind people, we have, um, about fifteen frequently asked questions um, on, uh, Facebook page and our website that I encourage you to, to take a look at. And if you have any questions, please call us or, or come on over and we'll be glad to answer any of your questions factually.
You can pass it around if you want. All right. Um, moving on, discussion, uh, to new business. Um, we're going to hand it over to Amy Doyle to discuss the, uh, local critical shortage in physics, uh, certification.
I'm excited this is on here. I heard about this for the first time this week.
Great.
Very excited. I mean, you know.
I'm sorry, that wasn't at your seat when you came in tonight. We were in another meeting and I just didn't quite get it to your seat. So, um, I thought it would make sense to put together some information about a local critical shortage. Um, it's not something that's done all the time. Um, so I kind of went through and tried to answer some questions as they, they might come up. So, um, in New Hampshire, um, based on the professional standards board and the state board of education, they make it so that all professionals that work in a public school have to have um, the right license to do their job as long as that's required. They then provide different pathways to licensure that you may be familiar with. Um, that is you graduate from college, you're recommended for licensure to the department of education. That's one pathway that teachers can, um, get a license. The second is maybe they were licensed in another state. And then they moved here and they might have to do some things. But, um, if they were recommended by a different college or a different university, or if they can meet competency through an oral board, that's another way that a teacher could get a license. Um, the third pathway involves something called a site-based, um, licensing plan. Um, and this would be folks that they have met minimum requirements either in their education or in their life or work experience. Um, and they submit that to the D O E and the D O E gives them what's called a statement of eligibility. Now I say all that, I know it's kind of getting technical and it's something that I do a lot in my role. So I, I want to make sure that people understand what it is that we're doing. Um, every year, the state board of education, um, lists what's called the critical shortage list. And they gather this information from school districts or, or public charter schools to say, what, what teaching positions or administrative positions are you having a hard time filling? Because they want to be able to enable folks to take those positions and work towards their licensure. So the state has their own critical shortage list and they decide who's on it or what teacher, what teaching areas are on it and which ones are not. But they also have this, um, part of RSA one eighty-nine thirty-nine A, which says that we have this list as a state. But if you are having a hard time at the local level, finding a credentialed person to fill a role, you can do what I'm asking us to talk about tonight, which is to declare a local critical shortage. Um, so a few weeks ago, we accepted a resignation for the physics teacher at the high school. And from then, we've had that job posted and have had no viable candidates at all. Um, physics education, as you might, um, expect is a tough area to fill. Um, and I, like you, may be shocked to learn that it's not on the critical shortage list. Um, in reaching out to the state and looking at their list, math and science positions are typically on that, on that list routinely. Um, I'm, I'm not sure why physics was taken off. It was. And that leads us to the situation that we have. So we have a position, um, that's open that we don't have a licensed teacher in, but we do have someone who meets the minimum requirements, is a longtime respected teacher here in the Merrimack School District. And, um, she is willing to go into, uh, creating and fulfilling the site-based learning plan with your support and declaring it a local critical shortage. Um, I did talk about, um, talked to Liz before I talked about her name publicly. So Elizabeth Dumay has been, um, in the science department at Merrimack High School since 2015. She's taught physics in the past. Um, she is a licensed science teacher. So she meets the requirements and is willing to, to go through this process if we're able to, um, if you support declaring the local critical shortage. Um, I did put some information about how we do that. Um, after tonight, you do vote on it. Um, and then I, uh, would write a letter, um, and then include your minutes, um, and submit that to the state. Uh, and then we would still be responsible for going through and creating the plan for Liz and, and supporting her uh, through the licensure process, which can take up to three years. I hope I've sort of framed this process, uh, so that folks can understand it. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have a question, but as somebody whose spouse is sitting back there who has two degrees in physics, I absolutely support this critical need. Because I know what it is for students to take physics. I know what it means for their future to take physics in high school. I went to a state where physics was required for graduation. And, um, New Hampshire is different in that role, but it is such a needed career field. And you learn, you started in the high school. But I also know there aren't a ton of people that are qualified, that have a physics degree and an education degree. So I absolutely support this.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we accept the local determination of critical staffing shortage in physics education.
I will second that motion.
Uh, well, all those in favor? Aye, five zero zero.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, um, that Liz Dumay is a fantastic teacher. And she's a wonderful choice in every possible way for that. So we're, I'm really excited about it.
May I just say, Lori, I'm, I'm-
We did one thing right. All right.
May I just say, Ken, uh, Lori, I'm with you. I, I think every student should be required to take physics because there is nothing we do in life that doesn't involve some principle of physics.
I couldn't take physics in high school. I had too many music classes. Couldn't take it. No. That's why I'm a music teacher. Um, all right, moving on to, uh, oh, draft of two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school calendar.
Yes, we, uh, developed a committee back in January to take a look at the construction of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year calendar. Uh, please know that, as I say every year, the, the calendar in a, the next school year is not just taking the previous calendar and just moving it forward. We have discussions about, um, uh, in particular with Amy, uh, what are the professional development needs and what are the configuration of the days? Full, full days of P D, uh, early release days that might serve us uh, most optimally in terms of the who, what, when, where and why of, of professional development. But, um, you know, the variables that go into the, uh, school calendar, first of all, the appearance and readability. Um, it's required number of instructional days and contract days, professional development needs, uh, holidays, cultural observances, vacation periods, high school graduation date, which is, um, determined by statute. Uh, parent conferences, election days, collective bargaining agreements, kindergarten registration, transition day. Uh, the ability to take students and have students in certain grade levels, go in a couple of hours early on the first day of school, particularly if they're transitioning to a new, a new building. That always helps them become more acclimated to that, uh, site and a little bit more relaxed. Uh, school start and ending times, parent and staff input we receive. Um, we want to be sensitive to cultural and religious observances also. And I'll talk about a document that accompanies this in a, uh, movement in a moment. Uh, we also have done a great job, uh, in adhering to a state initiative from a year or two ago of aligning our calendar with the, uh, career technical education centers. Uh, I think we pretty much aligned perfectly, uh, with the centers. And, uh, that's, that's very important because we don't want either one of our districts being on vacation when the other one is not, or days off when the other one is not. That's very important to optimizing a child's exposure, uh, students' exposure to C T E programs. So we have put together the calendar, the only, um, error that we want to point out. And we always like to put a whiz waldo, uh, in the calendar. It's, it's actually, it's an error. It's not a whiz waldo. Amy, Amy was able to, to find it, um, in January. You'll see, uh, the side notes. We actually referenced February fifth, early release day. That's a typo. Sorry about that. Uh, we, we got it correct in February, but, um, I apologize. So we, we have adjusted that in the, uh, the next version that is going out. But you can see from my memo, there's a lot that we discuss about the calendar. Uh, and because we want to give it a lot of consideration. Now, one of the things that, um, I brought to the system a couple of years ago, which has been well received by the staff, that we include with the calendar and we distribute this, we put it online, we distribute it to all the staff, is the, um, guide to religious and cultural observances. Uh, there are about ten or eleven, twelve, uh, religious or cultural observances on the document that we have put together. What we want to do, uh, is bring, uh, cultural sensitivity, as much cultural sensitivity to the district as possible. What do students and their families experience on different religious or cultural observances? Could be fasting. It could be necessary for them to miss a day of school. So all those things figure into homework assignments, uh, testing schedules, uh, the conduct of, uh, of, uh, evening events at schools. We don't want them conflicting with important religious or cultural dates of significance. And so, uh, we hope that you'll find it helpful. Um, we've tried to snazz it up a bit compared to the calendar that we had many years ago that looked like a tic-tac-toe game and, and not much more than that. Uh, we've tried to make it as, as informative, as colorful, as interesting as possible with lots of information on there. We conducted a parent and staff, uh, survey. Over, over eleven hundred parents responded, three hundred and seventy-five staff. So thank you to everyone who took the time to respond to the survey. And, uh, their responses are reflected also in those, um, days that we observe as holidays, those vacation periods. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
So I'll, I'll just, just because I've been thinking of it right off the top of my head, I had a parent email. Why, why days instead of hours? Why a hundred and eighty, uh, school days as opposed to following the-
Well, sometimes, uh, we do, as we get towards the fourth quarter of the year, we do look at instructional hours also. And, uh, that's why in a couple of years now, we've been able to garner, uh, two days at the end of the school year for professional development and have not had to extend. Uh, and I anticipate if we don't have, um, any more no school days, uh, this year, we may be able to do that also. But we all, we always look at instructional hours as we get towards the end of the year to see when we can actually finish up the, uh, the school year.
So we do a little bit of both.
Yes.
Cool. Go ahead, Jenna.
So I had a question and I thought it was a good one because it actually didn't come to me. And then I realized that in the district that I work in on election days, the teachers are actually in the building doing professional development. Have we ever considered doing that? Because we have two days built into the calendar for election day. Obviously with all the kids coming and going, you know, that kind of population in the building, it becomes an issue. But, you know, with professional development, those days, I, thoughts? I don't, I don't know.
Uh, that, that is always a possibility. Um, now we, we, we tend not to do that during a very strong national election that's, that's coming up in November. Uh, if I remember, Matt, I think has told me about gridlock in the town over the traffic. And so, um, so, but that is, that is an option that we look at. One of the things that, that figures into that, Jenna, is we look carefully at calculating the number of student days, number M T A days, and number Mesa days, um, so that we, we are precise with our obligation with that regard. But that, that's always a possibility.
And I, I know that came up this year with the primary, which of course, we didn't know the day of the primary until two weeks before the primary. So it's hard to reschedule at that point. Yeah. Uh, Naomi, go ahead.
Um, I noticed that the early release days, before you had kind of clustered them around weekends. And I noticed that there are a bunch of them on Wednesdays. And I was wondering if you could speak to why that decision was made.
It was really around attendance, Naomi. So folks were taking the opportunity, um, for a long weekend. Um, but it was really then you're missing the, the required professional development. So we also tried, uh, to make it so that, um, you know, we were hitting the, the required training.
Lori?
I just have one final thing. I really do appreciate that we, um, have a lot of professional development days throughout the school year for our staff. It's really, it's critical learning for them and I really appreciate it. And if there's no further questions, I'm going to call the question.
I just have one, one additional comment. Two, real quick. First of all, that's an awesome winter break, by the way. You guys get the twenty-third off, like really nice. So that's a really good one. Um, I hear this a lot, um, half day versus full day professional development. And I think I brought this up last year. Um, and maybe it's just the folks I talked to, that there's just, the half day thing is tricky because, um, you know, the required trainings you can get done. You can get done like the bloodborne pathogen thing and all that stuff. You can get that done in the half day. So that's, that I'm, I totally understand having a few half days. Um, for big ticket, like we're talking about, you know, switching to competency-based education and, um, all the initiatives we're doing. Um, I think based on the folks that I'm talking to, there's a more, there's a bigger want for a full, per- more full professional days as opposed to half days. Um, and I know there's a lot that goes into that. Um, and I, you know, looking at this, it looks to me like there's more full professional days this year than there were or on this calendar as opposed to this previous year. Maybe I'm miscalculating that. There's five. Okay. All right. So I just something to think about. Um, and I know you put a lot of time and thought into what we do for, what we offer our staff. So-
It's, it's negotiated through the C B A.
Oh.
So that's why there's only that many days and we don't have to, um, make up, you know, the, the early release doesn't count.
Doesn't count as a day, right?
So we have five negotiated days in the M T A contract and that's, that's why it's five.
Teachers. All right.
And I may have to say also, notwithstanding, uh, collective bargaining issues, but if you're survey teachers, they'll almost be split fifty percent like the full days, fifty percent like the early release days. And so it's-
And even I was, I was, I was asking about those election days. Listen, as a teacher, I'm like, I love those days off personally. But somebody mentioned it to me, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Our workshop days.
That's when we have our workshop days too.
All right, go ahead, Lori.
So I make a motion that we accept the Merrimack School District S A U twenty-six school calendar for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five.
I'll second. All those in favor?
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to other new business. Is there other new business? Nope. All right. Approval of minutes for January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the public minutes.
Make a motion, we accept the January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four public minutes. Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Accepting, uh, five zero zero for the accepting of the January twenty-ninth minutes. Um, approval of minutes for the February fifth bond hearing. We have a motion to accept. I, I can, I make a motion to accept the January, or February fifth, uh, bond hearing minutes.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero. They are accepted. Uh, the February fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-four public meeting minutes. You can make a motion to accept.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Five zero zero. And finally, uh, February, the approval of minutes for February thirteenth, public and non-public minutes. Um, then I'll make a motion to accept.
Sure.
Sure.
I make a motion that we accept the February 13th public and non-public minutes.
Second, second, alright, cool. So although I, I made the motion, Jenna, second.
Oh, second, sorry.
I have, I have a correction.
Discussion, go ahead.
Um, I'm certain that it's a typo because they're one digit off from one another. But the, the public minutes and the non-public minutes have a different time listed for when we returned to public session. One of them says 6:40 and the other one says 6:50, so.
Okay, can we go back and look at that then? You said on the non-public minutes?
I, I, I wasn't keeping time, so I don't know which, which is the actual time. I'm assuming that when they got typed up, just the wrong button got pushed because they're right next to each other. But it's on the first page of the public minutes, about two thirds of the way down the page. At, it says at 6:50, the board re-entered public session. And then roughly the same place on the non-public minutes, it says at 6:40, uh, we re-entered public session, so.
We're gonna have to pick one, not on another.
I'm assuming it's written down somewhere.
Yeah, I think we might have to go back and.
Yeah, let's hold on those.
Hold on that one? Okay. We're gonna hold on.
And we need to break it in parts because I was in the non-public.
That's true, yeah.
Let's break those apart.
Okay. Uh, we will take a look at those at the next meeting. Alright, um, let's see, moving on, um, we're gonna hold off on consent agenda tonight. We'll bring that back at our next meeting. Moving on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Go ahead Naomi.
I went to two budget committee meetings, which Bill actually did a really great job of covering already. It was a work session on February 6th and the public hearing and more work session on February 13th. I wanted to say about the public hearing in particular, that I thought it was very well conducted and it was pretty well attended too. There were a lot of folks there expressing a lot of different viewpoints and I really appreciated that. I also wanted to, to give credit to the budget committee for the work they did because they did a great deal of work. Interviewing various departments and going over the budget and that there was, throughout the process, there was some disagreement between where we started from and they didn't, they didn't like those, those, I shouldn't say it that way. They, they, they voted in support of funding some of the things that we cut. Uh, we wanted to cut specifically gifted and talented French reading interventionist at JMU's and a small amount in a line for mentor stipends. And there was a lot of discussion about they, the committee recognized what the school board was trying to do in terms of why we wanted the, the bottom line budget amount that we wanted, that they really did hear us with that. And they explored a bunch of other options that, that for potential other cuts. And ultimately couldn't reach consensus on many of them. And I think that's why we ended up where we did, but I wanted to point that out, that they did that work. Some of the things that were discussed were lowering our school board contingency fund. And that one, they did actually get enough votes on. But they also discussed the technology capital improvement plan and contracted services, specifically the YES program. So I just wanted to bring those, uh, those things that they covered to our meeting to you guys.
Any other committee reports? Jenna?
I attended the Merrimack School District stakeholder team meeting, uh, which is really about grant management and how we will spend the grant money that we get from federal grants. We, there was discussion and we, basically there's, there's multiple areas. Safe and healthy schools, effective use of technology, um, those kinds of things. And so we, they talked about the two things that we prioritize were academic intervention and safe and healthy schools by addressing bullying issues revealed by data that we have within our district. So those are the things that we will be using grant money for. I was really excited to hear about these do the math intervention kits for Title I teachers. Because they sounded really cool and I actually can't wait to see them, so. Very exciting stuff.
Alright, any additional committee reports? Correspondence, anybody get any correspondence since the last meeting?
How long do you have?
I think we can categorize it, budget, SAU building warrant articles, French, gifted and talented, all of the above I've received.
Yep.
Boys basketball.
Yeah, I got some from boys basketball as well. Uh, yeah, yep, lots. And again, we're, we're getting to you, if we haven't gotten back to you yet, we will. Comments from the board?
I just want to say, um, I really am very grateful that you're all here tonight. We do our work generally in an empty room. And you know, to see our, to do our work in an empty room and then see all the comments online. And then it's sometimes it's frustrating because you see that there's, that's not how it is. And just to see that you came out tonight is meaningful. Why, whatever reason you're here, I'm, we, I will say for myself, I'm grateful that you're here and that you're part of the process and that you're paying attention, that you're asking questions and that you're, you're giving your time to be here tonight. Because I know you all have probably more exciting places to be. So thank you for being part of the process and being here.
I'll, I'll totally agree with that. I, I, it's been refreshing, it's been recharging. Cause as Jenna said, we are often talking to empty space. And so to see and feel the reactions from folks and to hear their feedback. I, I said at the beginning of the meeting, I think only good things can come from that because that means you care and you're paying attention. Um, and sometimes it feels like they're just, that doesn't exist. And so to hear people come and bring this kind of energy and this kind of passion, which I strongly feel we should all have this kind of energy and passion about our schools, whether you're in it or not. You know, our school district is, um, should be, it should be the beacon of light in any town. It should be one of the most important and valuable things we have. People should cherish it and support it and celebrate it. And I saw that tonight. And so I think that's a, that's a really great energizing thing that, you know, again, however things end up on April, whatever the voting day is, April 11th, I think.
Pretty sure it's the 9th.
The 9th, there you go, April 9th. However, things end up, um, I think this only opens doors to, okay, now what do we do? How do we make our schools better? So I, I, I totally agree with you Jenna, I think this is great. So thank you.
I'd also echo what they said. I also want everyone, because we have a lot of people who do watch online and are probably tonight watching or planning to watch after tonight's recording goes on YouTube. We've heard all the feedback from everyone on every side of these issues. And it's encouraging to see everyone here tonight. I encourage everyone to understand their differing opinions in our community. And there are strong voices on all different sides. And I love that our community's talking, we're talking to each other, we're, we're debating, we're discussing. And that is the way we can proceed. If we're open and honest with each other, even when we disagree. And I want to see that continue in a respectful way. And I haven't seen that, you know, in anyone here, this is not about anyone here, but even we need to check ourselves on social media. That we are communicating in a way that shows I disagree with you and this is why. But do it respectfully, because our town after the 9th of April, we have graduation to celebrate, we have the 4th of July parade to celebrate, and we need to stay as one community unified together. And so I love hearing all the differing views. I love hearing all the people talking to each other. And I want to see that continue in a way that is really edifying to the town of Merrimack.
I'm going to build on that one a little bit. My same friend who I was talking to, who, who said, wow, democracy is messy. She also said to me, um, and this, this one really struck home is that listening and agreeing are different things. And I want to reiterate my commitment to listen. We're not always going to agree, but I always want to listen. And the, the important thing, and the reason it was kind of building on Lori's comment is because a lot of times our emotions get involved when people don't agree with us. And that's really hard to take a step back and, and still hear what people are saying. And I just want to reiterate my commitment and I'm sure that everyone here shares it, that we really do want to listen. We won't always agree, but we always want to listen.
Final, so I just want everyone to know that I, when I taught at Merrimack High School, my very best friend was the French teacher Isabel Story. And so I understand and have an appreciation for French education. I also want to say, Tim, that your mom, I taught her and she was also one of my soccer players, so. Oh, there she is. And yeah, I could tell you a few stories, she was one, one tough girl.
Please step to the mic. And I'll wrap up by saying, come to the deliberative session on March 4th, 3rd, 4th, March 4th at 7:00 PM. Sorry, March 4th, I'm not very good with dates apparently. Alright, um, we now turn the floor over to you, public comments on agenda items. If you wish to speak on any of the agenda items tonight, you're welcome to come to the microphone and speak. We just ask that you state your name and address for the record. And if you're a student, no need to state your address, just your name. Microphone's open.
Thank you once again for the record, my name is Matthew Brown, I'm a student. I'd like to, once again, uh, share my appreciation for you and your deliberations tonight. I'm very pleased with the results. And I think moving forward, we need to use this as an example and not as a one-time thing. It's important that we work together. And I think in the future, it's important that we work with all stakeholders, teachers, community members, and most importantly, students. We're the ones being impacted by these. And I think it's crucial that as a school district, as a community, we continue to take student involvement seriously and that we find tools and we work on ways that we can increase student involvement in government. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim Bevis, I'd like to wholeheartedly second what Matthew said. I, I really look forward, I, I thank you all for, and appreciate you all for, for the work you do. And I look forward to in the future, working with, with Matthew and I'm sure you all know Finn. I, I look forward in the future to working with them and you to better our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trey Grant. I, this, this meeting was very helpful, um, for me to kind of more understand the situation. I think I definitely did come into this meeting with a, a bit of incorrect information. So I do appreciate all the work that's come into this. And I, I, I'm very glad that we were definitely able to come closer to an understanding on everything that's been happening.
Thank you.
I'm Aaron Murray. And I stand on a similar ground of Trey and I appreciate the work that you have been doing. But I still feel that there is a lack of understanding between the school board and some of the comments that the students have been making. Mostly about the position of Gateway again. It is not just a safe space and that's not just what we're looking for. And I think that it would be important for you guys to really consider what we have been saying and what we have been saying that they, the position itself provides for us. And, um, just because we are calmer and just because we have stayed does not mean we are not still upset. And, uh, we will be here and we want to continue to be involved. I want to continue to be involved because an empty room is an echo chamber that we don't want you guys to exist in. We want you to hear our voices more than we have been in the past. And we want you to really understand because there is a difference between hearing and seeing and listening and understanding. And I am looking for understanding for what we are asking and not just hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, from Fortune 40 for Conservation Drive, um, I would like to address two things quick. The one thing is on this, on the notion of, of respect online and, and maybe the same respect we want to extend in, in person. I want to make sure that people understand that not everybody sits on boards. Not everybody is going through budget process on a annual basis. And not everybody understands, you know, the language and, and, and not to, to dismiss any of the posts or comments that are made online. But when somebody mixes together the warrant article of six point something million dollars with the annual budget, uh, I don't believe that we should be assuming malicious intent as it has been, you know, posted by some people in town, uh, and some commentators. Fact of the matter is, and I want to pick up on, on what Lori said, fact of the matter is the warrant article will decide whether or not we pay six points some million dollars plus operating and maintenance costs for the next 17 years, that's as simple as it is. So, uh, it may not add to this year, next year's tax burden, but it will eventually add seven plus million dollars of dollars to the taxpayer. I'm not saying that's wrong or right, I'm not saying, I don't even want to say that I'm opposing or, or supporting it. I'm just stating the facts that this warrant article will decide seven million dollars worth of expenses over the next couple of years, period. Right? So I just want to put that in perspective to what was said earlier. The other thing I wanted to say is, I've been working all my life in customer service. I've been an executive in customer service in, in various roles. And the one thing I can tell you, when customers are happy, they, they open their wallet. Okay? Now our customers are of course, students, no doubt about it, but it's also parents, it's also taxpayers, right? And I speak of that a little bit from the MBD standpoint, as some of you know, I'm on the board of MBD. One of the things that I learned the hard way is if I don't listen as a board member to customers and don't bring their voice and their concern to the board, um, I'm not doing my job. And I'm not getting, getting the support from, 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 from the community. One of the things that I see all boards in town frankly do is focus too much on their own business. I'll give you an example, I know that, um, just about a year and a half ago, um, a, 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 um, a student in my son's class who, who graduated last year from high school, dropped out of high school the same year that he was supposed to graduate in spring, like February before graduation. He was basically finished with high school and dropped out. Why are we not hearing about this on this board? Why are we not talking about cases like that? In my opinion, the board should consider a agenda item that addresses hardships where, you know, the superintendent and, and, and the respective administrative personnel is presenting hardships that students are experiencing. Maybe even the teachers are experiencing, that families are experiencing. Of course, they have to be anonymous, I know that. But is there, for example, a frequent report that is being discussed here on a monthly basis about students at risk of dropping out? I don't know, I haven't seen it. Maybe it is, maybe it is behind the scenes, but I have not seen it. I'm not watching every meeting, meeting, but I'm watching quite a bit. The same is true for just customer feedback. My students just both graduated high school here in town recently, so I'm out of the game, out of the race more or less. But I can tell you, I had awesome experiences. I had teachers that had their ear on the ground so hard and they were paying a lot of attention to my kids and to others. And I had others that couldn't, couldn't have cared less. Concerns that have been presented to the administration, sometimes have been addressed, sometimes have not been addressed. If the board and the administration were publicly addressing concerns on a frequent basis, uncalled for, proactively, a customer service survey, you know, like a, a complaint box, you know, an agenda item where the board is being presented with current complaints of the parents. I bet you, you're gonna get a different support from the community. And we all know that changing our ranking in the state is not going to happen overnight. I appreciate all the work that is being done of, of the recent school board, I think of, of Bill, I think you've been a god center of this town. But I think, um, you know, Matt, you all guys have been, I mean, I don't know enough, so I'm not gonna. But you guys have been working so hard and I think a lot of people see it. And the results will take years to show, but you can show a different, you know, um, receptiveness to the community by talking about cases, by talking about individual concerns and not just talking about the budget, not talking about programs. Talk about the people that are affected by your decisions. And make that public, make it, make it known that you are paying attention to these things. I think that would be going, going a long way for you to receive the money that you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Smith and I am, uh, I live on 95 Bean Road. I came here back in January and listened when you were talking about all the proposed budgets in the different departments. And came with a lot of questions and a lot of them were answered, listening to what you were talking about. But I also left with a lot of questions. And I thought today, I wrote down a few questions and I just want to put them out there before I leave. If that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. So when you talk about Mr. Chevanel, when you talk about the money that goes back, you know, from taxes into our, you know, back to the taxpayer at the end of the year, where does that go? How do I see it? Where do I, I guess I need a course in, in taxation for dummies because, you know, I, I, I don't know where to look. And I think another thing I want to know is, so we're talking about a bond and I've seen that sheet that, that you showed me with the, the frequently asked questions and it was broken down by hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. What does that equate to for, like a homeowner like me? Is there a way or a formula or something where it could be put intangible? You know, where? Is there a way or a formula or something where it could be put in tangible, um, you know, ways for people to see like, especially going into this deliberation? Because like I too, you know, go on Facebook and I see all the comments and some are, some are, you know, pretty, pretty, um, inflammatory in, in, in some respect and some are very, you know, they get your, they get your ire up. Um, and the reason I come is because I want to learn the facts. I don't want to just make assumptions. But I don't, I don't know what that's going to boil down to. And I am one of those people who is retired and on fixed incomes. And so, you know, what, what the new tax bill might be will definitely have a big impact on me. I understand very much, um, I am an educator myself, um, the impact, you know, the, um, the, the need for, for the new offices. I've seen them. I've been there. Um, I understand that. I just wonder if maybe we could look at it from, you know, what is a true need and what might be a want? A conference room like this would be wonderful. I understand the reasoning behind it, but I also know that I've worked in other school districts and we did do a lot of our meetings in cafeterias or different rooms and we brought people together and, and there were some spaces for private meetings. Maybe you need bigger spaces for private meetings and maybe I don't understand all the implications and, and what, and why those are needed. Um, you know, because to me it sounds more like, well, this is, this would be delightful. And, and I'd love everybody to be delighted and I'd like a garage on my house that I could walk to on one floor. Um, but with my budget, I can't do it, you know? So I'm, I'm not trying to be negative, but I'm just trying to be realistic and, and tell you, I have concerns. I know a lot of people out there expressing this have concerns and maybe they don't all express it in a way that might be the most appropriate or, um, well, the way to, to come together, you know, and, and, and it can cause kind of, you know, barriers or, or hard feelings. But I think it is an important, um, discussion, an important question for a lot of people. They want to know, how is this going to impact me? You know, years down the row, down the, down the way, you know? So that is, um, one suggestion if that could be presented at the prelim, you know, they, the, um, deliberative session so that people have a better understanding of that. Um, and there's also one other question. This might get you mad. I don't know. But, um, you said you have 20 administrators in this. What do they all do? I understand there's probably, you know, principal, assistant principal at each of the schools. That's eight. And then, you know, the superintendent and, and you do the budget and the financial thing and you've got the curriculum people and you've got, you know, special ed. Um, but what are the other ones? And I, you know, I would like to know, is there a place for me to go to find out job descriptions? And, and what do they handle specifically, all these different people that we have?
Oh, uh, yeah. I mean, that information's on our website. Um, uh, and, uh, off the top of my head, there's director of student services, there's, uh, special education, um, there is title one coordinator, um, registrar, uh, head of, uh, guidance or no, that falls under student services.
Director of wellness.
Director of wellness.
Hold on, I actually have a list right here. It's director of wellness, a new one?
No, wellness we've had for a while.
Okay. Oh, hold on.
Yeah, director of technology, um.
I was just going to say, so normally Pam, we don't, um, we let you talk, we don't respond. That's why when you're looking at us like, why isn't anyone talking back to us? And, but that's usually how it goes. But, um, you could always call the central office, but it's all on the website.
And that would explain it. Yeah. Okay. I'll look.
The building and has all the.
And if I have any questions, I'll just shoot it off to.
Yeah, run down the list.
Yeah. So would you like Ken's email address?
I have right here. Melissa Palzak.
You have that? Okay.
Superintendent, assistant, admin assistant to superintendent, assistant superintendent for curriculum, admin assistant, the assistant superintendent, title one coordinator, data collection specialist, wellness director. I gotta make sure she, she gave me a comparison to another district. I gotta make sure.
That's all right. I can look. I just, you know, just want to know if there was a place and if there was like a little description so I could get a better idea.
I don't, I don't know. Is it listed online?
Yeah.
It is. And it's in the, on the plans, the titles of the people are listed in there on the, the drawing as well.
Okay.
And because she's asked a question, I know we're breaking protocol, but the two questions that she asked first that Pam asked for, I think they're important. In answer to the second one, yes, at the deliberative session, it'll have the dollar amount that each warrant article impacts per thousand dollars of your home's assessment. So it has exactly what each warrant article is going to cost the individual taxpayer on the, on the handout that you will get at the deliberative session so that you can see how that will impact your house specifically.
Or just for the first year?
It'll, well, it'll be the first year, but then when you take the, the warrant article for the building, you can take that as a pretty good estimate of what it's going to be for the, the life of the bond.
Okay.
And I'm going to let, I'm going to ask Matt to explain how we send the money back to the town and how they are the ones that, um, set the tax rate.
Well, what happens is you have your gross budget, so you have your appropriations. They add up to a certain sum. Let's say last year that sum was, just happened to be 90 millions, 742,000 dollars, right? Then you have your revenues. You have tuitions from other districts. You have interest on investments. You have food service sales, building aid, that's grant money we take in, catastrophic aid, that's for special ed, vocational aid, uh, federal funds, Medicaid. And then you have fund balance. That's a revenue. So you have all your appropriations. That's what you're going to raise less all these revenues. Fund balance or surplus, which in 22, 23 was 6,254,000 dollars. That was used to reduce the amount of money we're going to ask the taxpayers to raise. So it's a reduction. It's like a revenue coming in and we give it back.
Okay.
I can give you a much more in detail thing. You want to see tax rate papers, everything like that?
Yeah.
We can do that because I used to work for a town. I used to help set tax rates, everything like that. So I can, I can go through it pretty good, but that in essence, it comes in, it comes back to us as a revenue.
All right. Thank you for explaining that. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll try to make this short. My name is Shannon Rand. I live at One Blair Road here in Merrimack. Um, thank you all for all your volunteer hours. I always say that because I know how much time you put into it. And the past couple of weeks, I wouldn't want to be you right now. I just wouldn't with all the comments. I was very impressed with the students that came up about the gifted and talented program. Congratulations on coming up here and being so well spoken. I think it is imperative that these students, um, have a place to be able to grow in our school system. And it's hard because where do you come up with that money? And that's really difficult for the school board. Um, I have my own thoughts about where I think Merrimack could save money. Um, I did seven years in the district and, um, I do have, um, I, I did put in a request with Matt to talk about those, um, the budget. It pains me as, um, a person who's lived here for 46 years here in Merrimack. Um, I've been paying taxes for, um, nearly 25 years. Um, acre of land started about 3,200 on an acre of land. Um, my house is about 260,000. And then fast forward, I'm paying 8,000 in taxes now. My house is nearly, it's, it's definitely doubled. It's probably like 500 something. Um, I see it on Zillow. It amazes me. And I'm like, I gotta just sell and get it, get out of Dodge. But I just still have kids here in the Merrimack school system. And I want to stay here, but I can't with the taxes. And I know you're hearing that from all the taxpayers on the Merrimack forum and, I know you're hearing it. And you guys live here. It, it just pains me because this is my hometown. I want to be here and I can't when the budget keeps going higher and higher and higher. There has to be something which really doesn't impact, I mean, there, there has to be something. And I was talking about it with Lori at the SAU building. We need to look at third parties. I was asking on the Merrimack forum. I said, hey, can anybody get me the budget? Like the line by line item and people kept throwing links at me and I'm like, yep, that's not it. That's not it. I want to know like, who are we paying this money to? Almost nine, 90 million dollars. Who are we paying these funds to? What are they doing for our district? So that's the second caveat. Um, I heard a lot of people talking about bringing the kids in, talk to the school board, talk to the teachers. You know, who's there is the pair of educators. And let me tell you, they can tell you what's working and what's not working. And I'd be happy to sit down with any one of you and let you know what is not working in the school system. And I hope you know what's not working in the school system because if you don't, you'd be appalled. Behavioral issues. What's working in the special ed office and what is not working in the special office with the, the pair of educators? And I can tell you right now, they're not going to come and talk to you. Nope. Because they feel like then they would be a target. I can honestly come up here and say, after three years of not being in the school system, I, letting you know that there are issues with third parties within the special ed that it's just not working. And I think you would get a lot of information if you surveyed the pair of education, the pair of educators. Hey, what is working? What's not working? Give us examples. They could probably save this district a lot of money. Millions. Um, so I hope you take that into account. I really do hope that you reach out to our pair of educators because they are the lifeline. And there might be a reason why you're not getting pair of educators to come in money, but they're just not feeling heard and they're afraid to be heard. I'm not a spokesperson for them. I'm just letting you know, three years out of it, I, that's just my thoughts on it. Um, and I'm not speaking for any pair of educators. This was for myself and what I saw and what observed. So if you want any kind of context about it, please reach out to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, um, Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. Um, obviously this time of year is difficult for everyone. It is difficult for you on the board, for administration, for people in the town, for our students. We all have different priorities. We all have different opinions. We all have different experiences, but we are all part of this community. Um, I'd like to take a moment now as a parent to speak in favor of the reading interventionist position that was supposed to be added to JMU's in the next year. Um, I understand that the beginning of the budget, uh, Dr. Rowe had requested to add a staff member to help address students' social and emotional needs. Um, we've heard behavior is a common theme that our students are struggling with and they need to be in a regulated situation and state of mind to learn. Um, she also requested to have a staff member added to serve as a reading interventionist. Um, Dr. Rowe was asked to choose between the two, and ultimately she chose a staff member to help with our students' social and emotional needs. Um, in the words of the former chair of the budget committee, Naomi Schoenfeld, making Dr. Rowe choose is creating a false dichotomy. We don't need to make that choice. I specifically am calling out the reading interventionists because the fifth graders at JMU's now, the fourth graders moving up to JMU's next year, were in first and second grade during COVID. They missed out on fonus instruction in the curriculum. They did not get to benefit from the new foundations program that we've added. We all know, and we've heard it repeatedly, that early intervention is critical to increasing educational outcomes. As mentioned, this investment will not only save us in more costly future investments and interventions, but it will help our students feel more confident and more capable to navigate their studies and their world. I know that the budget committee and school board administration did not agree on all the proposed cuts. But ultimately, whatever number after deliberative session and our vote is up to this board and administration on how that is spent. I believe that this board and administration over the last few years have created positive momentum for our district and our students. And I look forward to watching you continue to serve all students from our special gen, special education, our general population, and our gifted and talented students who all deserve to have their needs met. And that's what we're all here striving for. Thank you.
All right. Then we will close public comment on agenda items for tonight. Uh, and do we have a motion to adjourn? Second.
Sure.
It's on Naomi first.
Great.
All those in favor? Five zero zero deliberative session. Microphone's not on. Deliberative session on March 4th, 7:00 PM. We hope to see you all there. Thank you so much for coming. Uh, have a great night.